You guys didn't want to stick around for the last meeting?
I was there for a few minutes.
I got the last half hour of it. I thought I freaked out that I was in the wrong meeting.
But most of the people were there. And Liz, don't worry, your daughter's on her way home.
I did see you on there, Don.
What's up?
I said I did see that you were also on the same meeting.
Well, I knew the planning board was now, but I saw this only because I jumped on.
Yeah.
I don't know, there was something on my audio. I couldn't hear anything, so I got off and then back on again. Hello? I'm just seeing you, Cindy. Your nose. You're gonna move your camera.
Hi, what's going on?
All I'm seeing is your nose.
My nose?
Yeah. You're scratching it and you're right up on the screen.
I'll move back.
There you go. No, no, your camera is like too high. Now we see the top of your head.
Really? That's not what I see? Is that better?
Camera. No, 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 now it's now. There you go.
There you go.
There you go. It's better.
Okay.
There you go.
Sorry to scare you all.
No, I wasn't scared.
So I see Phil, Dennis, Brian, Liz, waiting on, waiting on the chairman. Bill will be here in one second.
I apologize for getting late. Can you all hear me?
Yep, yeah, we can hear you now.
I'd like to call the January 14th, 2021, Planning Board Meeting to Order. Jim, the first thing on our agenda this evening is a continuation of the public hearing for our Red Mill Definitive Plan zoning bylaws. Can you bring us up to the, before you do that, can you just articulate what the governor says? So we can do these meetings via Zoom.
Yep. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting will be held via the Zoom online option. All information and instructions can be found at the end of the agenda. And so, yes, as you mentioned, the first item on the agenda is Red Mill Definitive Plan. Since, so as you may recall, at the last meeting, we had, we had a walkthrough with the applicant getting into some detail in terms of, you know, site features and traffic. And we were just waiting on drainage analysis from our peer review engineer, BSC. They have since provided that, and the applicant has had an opportunity to review the drainage analysis and provide comments, which you do have in your packet this evening. I see the applicants there, as well as our peer review engineer, Frank Di Pietro from BSC, who can certainly walk you through any comments and concerns he may, he may have.
What I'd like to do is have the applicant start with a no review of what's going on.
Yeah, Mark Allen from Allen Engineering. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Jim said, we have had the opportunity to review the BSC response letter, and we have provided our written responses to that. So last we spoke, we were, we were obviously at the planning board stage looking to look at the entire project as a whole, which is the Red Mill Estates definitive subdivision, as well as the municipal improvements behind Town Hall. So unfortunately, the Conservation Commission kind of has them segmented. But for this purpose, this meeting tonight, we'd like to sort of keep the whole project in scope. And Mike Dryden from our office, our senior project manager, has put together these responses for us. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of let him kind of go through those answers to BSC Group's comments, unless, unless the chair thinks that Frank should go through his comments prior to.
No, I'd like to hear the comments and then have Frank respond.
All right, Michael, why don't you just kind of go through the three letters?
Michael, we're not hearing you.
Are you on mute, Mike?
Are you the 508 and the 486 at the end?
No, he's, he's live.
Well.
It should say Michael Dryden, Allen Engineering.
Yeah, he doesn't have audio connected.
Yeesh.
Can you hear me?
There we go.
I'm not muted on my end, so I'm not really sure what's happening there.
We got you now.
You are on the phone.
Right, right. Sorry about that. Thanks, Mark. So what you have before you are three letters dated January 12th, 2021. And the first of which is probably the easiest to go through is from Don DiMartino. It does not involve BSC Group at all. And I would suggest that we don't go through these items one at a time painstakingly. They're technical in nature, and I will just tell you that each and every one of those comments has already been addressed. We've already made the plan, the changes to the plans, and those plans being queued up to be issued in the near future once we can address all of the comments. But unless, Mr. Chairman, you'd like me to go through Don's comments, they're all technical in nature. I'll just give you sort of the flavor of it. Add a main line water valve, lower the sewer in a few areas, relocate hydrants so that they fall on property lines, those types of things. And again, we have no issues whatsoever with any of those comments. So unless you'd like me to go through them one at a time, I.
Jim, what is your?
I agree that these are all very specific callouts from Don. I forwarded him the response letter, and he'll give us an update as to whether or not there's any additional items. But I, I think it's an accurate depiction that, you know, things like, things like location of hydrants have been relocated and, and meet the request of Don DiMartino.
Okay.
Great. The second correspondence. I'm sorry?
The second letter?
Yes, the second letter. If you look midway down on the cover, it's, it references BSC Group's December 7th correspondence. And there was also a memo attached to that letter from, I believe, their environmental group dated November 30th. So that's the next one that I'd like to go through. And we started to talk about this at the last meeting. We had just received this prior to the last meeting, and I think we had some brief discussion about some of Frank's initial concerns. But we've just put our responses in writing, and I'll try to move through this as quickly as I can. I should say that attached to this letter also is an updated list of planning board waivers. And if it be the pleasure of the board, we'd love to have the board act on those waivers tonight. We, we almost got there last time, but I think it would be very beneficial and helpful for the design team to understand that the waivers are in place before we go ahead and issue this next iteration of the plan set. So starting on page two of that letter, and I'll, again, move through this as quickly as I can. I don't think there's any need to read this word for word. I'll paraphrase where possible. We talked about this already. Infiltration basin on Town of Bellingham land. The regulations require basins to be on a separate lot. And in this case, for the municipal improvement project, the basin occurs on town property. So we defer to the board if they would like to see some sort of easement or, or parcel created. But we, we don't see the need for that. But we certainly don't want to speak for the town. Any comment or discussion there before I move on?
Jim, what's your feeling?
Yep, so, so this one specifically, since it's on town property, doesn't necessarily need to be on a separate lot, in my opinion. And so, yeah, this is, I, it does, by the letter of our regulation, I understand it does, it does ask for one. But since this is a unique circumstance where it's being built on town property, I don't, I don't believe it's necessary to be carved off.
And has our council reviewed this?
Council has not reviewed this one, but to be honest, we have another basin about 50 feet north of it that, that's not on a separate lot either. It's on town property that we constructed recently.
Okay.
If I could, if I could, Michael, just interject here, and Jim, being the pleasure of the, the board. What we're gonna try to do after Michael goes through all these comments is the next iteration, we'd like to drop items from this response letter that may not be relevant anymore. So in other words, items that are acknowledged, we'd just kind of like to, moving forward, keep the paperwork less cumbersome and just move on with, with just the items that are outstanding.
So in essence, you want to have an action item list? Correct?
Yes.
Yeah, you're looking for punch.
Along with an action item list.
Yeah.
And items fall off. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Obviously, we hold the opportunity to revert back to this. I'd like to skip over the waivers for a few moments. You want to talk about the site?
Okay. Sure. We'll start at section, page three, Site Plans. Our first two items, no response required. Let's see, S3A. So this was a question relative to the timing and the buildout of the project. And as we talked about a little bit last time, the duration of each phase is essentially market driven. And the applicant anticipates that Phase One will take approximately one to two years. And again, that's, that's not written in stone. That's definitely market driven. Obviously, the applicant wants to move forward with construction as quickly as possible. But that's sort of our best foot forward at this point.
And we, Mr. Chairman, we're also in discussions with the applicant as well as to maybe even having a Phase 1A and 1B. And we'll bring that back to the board's attention. But we may, we may just do the municipal improvement up to the first wetland crossing and consider that Phase 1A, and then maybe Phase 1B, going over the wetland crossings out to Route 140. But that's something we're gonna be in discussions with, with Don DiMartino and, and the zoning board of appeals when we go through the earth removal permits.
My viewpoint, based on the recent projects we've worked on, I like the door facing 1A and 1B. But I would like to get back to the site plan, Section 3. A lot of cubic yards of material. I can maybe take enough of the site.
Correct.
And that's something, obviously, we're gonna need to believe a waiver on. And also, we have to look at minimizing the impact in traffic in general and that specific area. So we'll need a plan to address that. And Jim, I think that could be part of construction management.
Right, so, yeah, so I think the applicant certainly could build that into the plan for construction management. It's gonna require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals for the earth removal. So I know I did reach out to the applicant to get timing wise for it's submittal, because I think we would want that sooner rather than later. So that, you know, they could get the understanding from the zoning board as to earth removal and build that into any kind of construction management plan slash, you know, SWIP, stormwater prevention plan, you know, for, for us and the board.
Again, I just interject for a moment. I would think, I did not want to prejudge a decision by the zoning board. But ideally, we should limit anything coming out of Mill Street, if at all.
Understood, Mr. Chairman, and that is our intent. You'll see, as Michael goes through these letters, our complete intention is to, once we meet with this board tonight, we're gonna meet with Conservation in two weeks to have our final design parameters nailed down. We're gonna reissue another 60-sheet set, and that set we intend to take to the zoning board of appeals for the earth removal permit. And we fully anticipate this hearing still being open, and that you folks on the planning board can contribute to the zoning board of appeals in any way you see fit.
Okay, that's fine. Please continue if you want.
Sure. On page four, this earthwork discussion continues to item through item C. And I think we've already sort of exhausted what we need to say tonight. We will address truck traffic restrictions on roadways. All of the above is part of that filing that Mark just mentioned. F4 is.
What I want to address. I'm reading the response. This promise implies multi-municipal improvement project. Insofar as Mill Street will be utilized as a construction access road. Can you tell us how much access you'll be using on that road? Because we want to minimize that as best we can.
You totally understand, Mr. Chairman, and, and as you mentioned, your, your desire is to have a Phase 1A and 1B. So with a 1A, you don't have that secondary access out to Mechanic Street at the new Lincoln Properties intersection. So it will be dependent upon initially having access through Mill Street until such time that we build that road, Common Street, to come around to meet up to Mill Street. So there'll be a phasing plan shown in the near future that you'll have to be able to comment on. But initially, the first, the first, very first trucks will be rolling through Mill Street, unfortunately, until such time that we build that Common Street up to the intersection.
Let me ask you a question. And I apologize interrupting your presentation. What if we flipped 1B to 1A? Construct the road first.
We thought, I mean, again, it's, it's maybe the pleasure of the board or whatnot. But we, we intended to do one as a, as a complete phase. We didn't anticipate the ability to pull building permits until we had a through road. It's just been until recent discussions about the earth removal permits and the phasing plans that have been requested by the town. By all means, we can discuss that with, with the applicant. We're not opposed to doing that. We just need to sort of iron that out between us and the town.
Okay. Feel free to continue.
Great. Page four, S4, no issue there. Just, BSC is asking for a separate erosion and sedimentation control plan, which we have already added to the set, and we'll, you'll see that at the next issuance. S5, no response required. As Mark indicated, that these types of comments will fall off as we move forward. S6. This was, this is relative to adding a mass DOT type SS guardrail, which we've added to the plans. No issue there. I'm on page five now. On item B, roadway signage and stop control pavement markings are included. They've been added to the plans, and you'll see them on the next iteration. Again, I'm moving through these as quickly as I possibly can, because there's quite a bit here. C. C is relative to, what, essentially what BSC is saying is there are some areas in the site, one being on the municipal improvement side, and we'll talk about later on another area on the Red Mill site where roadway grades are a little bit steep, and they'd like to see cascade type grates. We've agreed to do that. We've already added those to the plans. Item S7. This is relative to the low point at Mill Street. And the discussion we had last time was the need to evaluate the capacity of that existing 15-inch pipe that currently drains the low point at Mill Street. And we are currently evaluating that entire watershed area, the large wetland area behind the Towns, Town Hall, to determine the capacity of that pipe. What we had talked about previously was adding a second 15-inch pipe, sort of belts and suspenders. But I think what Frank is asking is let's evaluate that pipe, and let's really determine if there's a need to upgrade that pipe. And I think, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, we're open to discussion. If, if it makes more sense to just replace the existing pipe with a little bit larger pipe versus adding the second pipe, I think we're amenable to that. I think one of the nice things about adding a second 15-inch pipe is the first one can stay in place and be operable for, for a time during construction. But again, I think we're open to discussion on that one.
Yeah.
Mark, feel free to add anything there.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Yeah, so what we're gonna do, based on this letter from, from BSC and Frank, is we're gonna actually expand our drainage analysis in this area to actually evaluate all of the water that's going through the wetlands themselves and going into that pipe now. We basically, at the last iteration, said we'll, we'll just, you know, double the capacity. But we're gonna pause and evaluate what amount of flow is going through that pipe now. If the pipe can handle it, it's in great shape. So I hate to just add a double pipe if we don't need to. But what we're gonna do as part of this municipal end of the project, this Mill Street and Common Street extension, we're gonna, we're gonna expand the scope of our hydrology analysis. And we may even increase the, or at least try to minimize the peak rate runoff, although being very minimal in this area by adding a small infiltration trench as well. So we haven't provided additional plans for tonight's meeting, but we just want to let you know how the, the, the design is progressing moving forward.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may too, so just to remind it to the board. So this is, this is towards the end of Mill Street behind, essentially running through and behind the, the existing industrial buildings. This is essentially a request from the abutters that were there that are getting inundated with, with runoff from essentially Mechanic Street coming downhill without any drainage other than this there. So I appreciate the applicant looking at this and trying to improve it where they may. Though, one other comment I may add to is if you don't mind, while you're out there evaluating it, I believe that the out, at the outfall, there is what essentially is an existing basin, though it's drastically overgrown and it might have wetland features perhaps. If you could look at, while you're doing it, to maybe just clean it out. That would be my only request there.
Yeah, absolutely. We definitely will. And we had the luxury, actually, Mike and I, when we did our site visit, to look at this exact point, to run into the owner of the building at the end of, of Mill Street. And we asked him specifically what his concerns were. And he did mention the fact that since it was, you know, poorly draining, that his major concern was that the catch basin grates actually just filled up with leaves. As you, as you may imagine, a lot of the trees are very close to the road. And when the leaves drop in the fall, they tend to, you know, impact the, the ability for the catch basins to collect water. So it was good to hear what, you know, on the ground issues were. So when we mentioned to him that we're gonna double the capacity of the, the inlets, he was very happy. And I think just with more routine maintenance of cleaning the catch basin grates, we're gonna be far well along in that area.
Okay.
Continuing on, bottom of page five, item B, and then I'll flip to page, to page six. Again, this is all sort of the same topic. When we were talking about adding a second 15-inch pipe, Frank rightly brought up the concern about the structural integrity of that existing structure. So if that ends up being the preferred solution, we have added a note to the plan to make, to, to evaluate that structure and determine whether or not it can accept another pipe. And if it can't, it'll have to be upgraded to a larger structure. So that's what we're saying there. Item S8 on page six. Frank is asking about the water quality for the, essentially the stormwater flow that we're taking on from town property and also from the main road. And he's essentially asking what treatment is being provided. So obviously, we're providing a basin, a basin for volumetric storage, but his comment is more toward the treatment under MS4 requirements. So what we have, and Mark, interject if you need to, but there's an existing basin behind Town Hall that will remain. And we're essentially running that flow through a drop inlet, which does have a deep sump. So that's essentially the treatment that's provided prior to that runoff entering the new basin on the east side of the connector road.
Yeah, so just to elaborate on what Mike is saying is, and at the top of the meeting, I think Jim mentioned, the drainage basin behind Town Hall was recently constructed. There was a settlement, sediment for bay, an infiltration basin, and an outlet control structure. That was the, the major improvement for MS4 water quality. So the town did a, a great, a great improvement to the area just by doing that basin itself. So what we've done is we've actually taken the rear parking lot and added that into the mix and put it through a deep sump drop inlet to just provide another 25 cent total suspended solids removal, put a hood on it for oils and grass, gases, and then we'll discharge to the wetlands. So we, again, with belts and suspenders, we're just, we added one more layer to what the town has already done in that area.
Under stormwater management, on page six, SW6, we've added the drop inlet detail to the municipal improvement plan set. Again, just to reiterate all of this, because it can get a little confusing. This letter we're going through right now is specific to municipal improvements. The plan set, from a planning board perspective, covers all of these improvements. But from a conservation standpoint, they are two separate filings. So we took that drop inlet detail that we already had on the Red Mill site and added it to the municipal improvement plans.
Okay.
SW7. We have revised our basin cross-section, so it's consistent with the waiver request. And I know Mr. Chairman wanted to put the waivers on hold. We'll circle back to that in a bit, I assume. I assume. SW10, a separate O and M plan. We had, we had previously prepared an overall O and M plan, but again, there was no separate O and M plan for the municipal improvement project. So we have prepared that as well. And you will see that along with the next iteration of the plans. So to close out this document, on page seven, this is the BSC memorandum, and correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, but I believe this is from your environmental group. They conducted a site visit on November the 30th. And the first three items is really no response required, but I just want to spend a moment on the last one on the bottom of page seven. There was some concern that the very small replication area that is proposed on the south side of Mill Street to mitigate wetland impact associated with adding a sidewalk to Mill Street. Its location was a concern in that it was close to the, essentially the offgraded slope of the roadway. So Mark and I, when we were out there recently with Sage, we had looked at that area. And we didn't exactly share the same concern, but what we did in the spirit of cooperation is we did slide that compensation area over a little bit to get it away from the slope area of the road. Based on our observations, it was already pretty flat. But again, we did slide it over a bit just to maintain the flattest possible grade for that replication area.
And Sage didn't agree with that location. Again, revisiting that same exact spot, it was more of a conservation item, but we just wanted to bring that up tonight.
Okay.
Well, I think if it's, if it's a pleasure of the board, I'm going to have Michael just kind of go through the waiver requests for the planning board tonight. What we would love to accomplish tonight is just to get some final design criteria under our belt so that we can start to formulate this last set of design plans. I think, and again, Frank, please weigh in if I'm misspeaking. I think we've sort of encapsulated everything BSC has wanted. And again, the final few waiver requests will really go a long way to finalizing the design plans.
Again, I looked at the letter, I got the letter yesterday, and so I've looked it over, I haven't really evaluated in great detail. My very, just first impression is, yeah, I think a lot of progress has been made. I will want to obviously look at a little more detail and look at the plans. But I would, I would agree that the waivers are going to be a big to do here in that the design has incorporated, assuming the waivers are going to be granted. And so if that changes, there'll be some potentially significant changes to the design of the site plan. So again, I'm not 100% going to say it looks okay, but again, I think you've addressed the comments that we brought up previously, certainly for the connector road.
And to boil down to the connector road, really now what we're talking about is the one waiver is what I have here, right?
Correct.
For the planning board, that is. So, and that's the three to one slope. I don't know, Frank, if you had any comment in regard to that on page two at the bottom there, just, just the three to one slope for some of the basins there.
Yeah, and I'm not going to challenge the wisdom of the town standard for three to one slope. Again, I think that's something that's relatively easy to maintain and to make sure that there's minimal erosion. I think a two to one slope can be built and be maintained. It requires, I think, a bit more design consideration and certainly more care in construction. And the big thing in my mind is to make sure that in fact, it gets stabilized, vegetation or whatever else. So with that preface, I'll turn it back to the board here.
And to the chairman, I think what we've learned from recent projects is if the board's interested in granting this waiver, I think a condition certainly could be had that a construction monitoring agent would be present during not only the construction of the steeper slopes, but also in the stabilization of those slopes so that we can confirm that it gets completed correctly and that it has kind of the long-term ability to stay in that manner. And so I would certainly just, if the board does want to recommend granting that waiver, I would just ask for that condition.
I'd like to get, once you hear everything from Frank, from what I'm hearing right now, I don't want to speak in the name of the entire board. Frank, you would feel more comfortable for a little more time, correct?
Again, I think to review the material that has been presented in this letter, yes. But again, I will, the waiver request, I think, is a big item. So if they go ahead and prepare the plans and modify them and then say the waiver is not requested, they're going to have to go back in and modify the plans on the.
How much time when you need to feel more comfortable with the waivers?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. This, this waiver, I guess what I'd look at is a, I'd want to see what the specifics are. They're showing right now a two to one slope and that can be built. The concern I have is how it's built and how it is stabilized. So that it could be that the conditions are applied that make sure that that is built appropriately and is stabilized appropriately for waiver one.
Yes, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to hold off on the waivers. And we'll get to that after Frank's, Frank's input.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I just, I just want to clarify and make sure everybody sort of understands the magnitude of this waiver request. The bylaw requires four to one slopes throughout. The original waiver request was for three to one slopes, which is very, very common in most municipalities that we work in. And that waiver reflected those three to one slopes. When we agreed to respect the 25-foot no disturb buffer zone for the commission, that basin really got squeezed. So we didn't want to essentially have no volumetric storage for the town. So we steepened up just that one slope. It's the exterior slope of that one basin. The interior slope is three to one. It's just that one slope. That's the only exception to the three to one request. And as Frank, I think accurately, accurately stated, we construct two to one slopes all the time, whether it be juke netting, there's various stabilization methods that can be used. Jim also spoke about construction monitoring. Those things can easily be conditioned. So to Frank's earlier point, it would be very, very helpful for us to know that we can move forward with this waiver. We will bolster the plans. I assume the board will condition the plans, again, to include construction monitoring in that area. I don't think what we're talking about is anything that's insurmountable. It's one, two to one slope.
I appreciate that and I want to hear from the board. Once Frank gives his input. And I would just ask that, bear in mind, I don't think if we were hypothetically to address this issue on a second meeting in January or a meeting in February, based on what Frank knows now, increasing his comfort level at that point in time, I think we can all get to the same point within, you know, two to three weeks.
If I, if I can, Mr. Chairman, Mark Allen again. We're specifically not reissuing any plan set right now. What we're doing is just basically responding to Frank's comments and asking the board to review the waiver request so that we can, so that we can reissue design drawings. I think we're to the point now, and I think Frank will agree, that everything in principle is, we're all on the same page. It's just a matter of how we revise the end set of plans. So I think we need this information moving forward.
Okay, again, I would like to hear more from Frank, but I'm hearing that Frank would feel more comfortable with a little more time. But again, that's something the board can discuss. It's not fair for me to weigh in as one person. Apple, Mr. Chairman, I also want to, yes?
Mr. DePietro, our peer review just received these documents a day or so ago. We kind of have a board rule that documents are supposed to be in by Friday, previous Friday. I would feel more comfortable having Mr. DePietro be able to review this in sound and come back with us. I do feel that maybe we can do some conditioning that would allow us to move in a direction, but I certainly would like to hear peer review, be able to review this before we move forward. I wouldn't have a problem with moving forward at a meeting relatively soon, though. Those are my comments.
If maybe I could sort of provide a suggestion. Rather than having the folks at a, prepare a whole new set of plans to be changed, and I don't want to delay things, but I certainly could write up within the next week and get it in time, a week before your next meeting, if it's two weeks away, specific letter just addressing the waivers, not going back and I'll take on a good face for the time being that what they've said in the letter that we just went through, they're going to do. And I could come back, I'll, I made some comments, but I could make a little bit more detailed comments on the five waiver requests before you. Does that seem something that's reasonable and that'd be something you could do at your next hearing?
To at least four of us at present, we can discuss that as a board after we hear your presentation.
And just to elaborate on Frank's point and Phil's as well, there are, there are two separate items sort of here. There, there's the BSC response letter that was, our response was given just a couple of days ago. But be it known, the waiver requests have been in front of the board since June. So we haven't changed any of the waiver requests since June. It's just a matter of how we shape the basins moving forward. All the other.
I understand that.
Comment responses are technical in nature. The waivers are just a matter of how we're going to shape the ends of the basins.
You're dealing with a lot of people who are attending this meeting who do not have your technical expertise. We rely on our consultant. And I think holding off, I've heard nothing from Frank that says the waivers should not be granted, but he just needs more time. This is a big project for the town. Dramatic impact and traffic for the town during construction. So as one person, just as a board member, I would feel more comfortable with a little more time.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make one last suggestion, and I think Frank offered to make, to do a write-up for the waivers, perhaps we just look at the five waivers and any progress that we can make, even if we vote on three out of the five, some of them are very straightforward. A month ago, the board talked about, for instance, tree spacing. We've provided a graphic for this meeting so that we could deliberate on tree spacing and perhaps we can try to check the box on at least a couple of these waivers. I think that'll reduce Frank's work, that'll reduce our work. Anything that we can accomplish, I think, is a good thing. And I don't mean to push the issue too hard. If that's not the pleasure of the board, I certainly understand and respect that. But I do think there are some, as again, the example I gave for tree spacing, that we could just sort of, again, check the box and try to make some progress wherever possible.
Does the Afghan team present other than discussing the waivers?
Other than going through the comments? I mean, again, as Mark stated earlier, our, one of our biggest goals for this evening was to focus on the waivers. So I think it would be a lost opportunity if we weren't able to deliberate on any of the five waivers. For instance, one of them is a sidewalk on one side. That's not really a technical issue.
And I'd like to hear Frank give us his overview of the project and the waivers.
And I believe Frank has in his responses commented on all the waivers. He's basically says up to discussion, discussion for the planning board.
Well, he's a focal point at this point in this development. So we rely on him for his expertise. So Frank, it looks like waiver one would be on hold. Have you had a chance to look at the other waivers of other board members?
I, I have looked at the other waivers and I can certainly go through them. Again, I think ultimately, it's going to be the board's decision, but I'd be happy to go through the waivers. We can go one by one if you want to and.
I would appreciate that.
Okay. Surely. So waiver two talks about, again, essentially subdivision requirements require sidewalks on both sides. They're proposing to put a sidewalk only on one side. I don't have a huge amount of experience in building, but I've seen this applied in other projects. And it does a couple of things. One, it allows certainly a little bit less pavement areas. It does provide access for the pedestrians and things like that. I don't have a problem with having a one, you know, one-sided sidewalk. Again, at crossing point, you want to make sure that, you know, if you're going from one roadway to another, there's an appropriate crossing that's safe. But other than that, I would not have an issue with this waiver being granted.
Okay.
Can we go to the next one or you want to act on each as you go through?
Let's talk about each one first.
Okay. So again, waiver request three, I'm getting a little bit out of my element with trees, but it talks about the spacing of the trees throughout the project. There was a plan attached to the submittal materials that.
Actually, Frank, if I could interject, Frank, I'm sorry. Waiver number three is relative to the distance from the.
I'm sorry, okay.
Sidewalk to the trees. Sorry to interject.
No problem. And again, I think my understanding of this waiver from reading what the Afghans provided is that they want to have some flexibility in where they put them, that they don't want to impact, say, a driveway or some other feature on the roadway. They'd like to be able to have some ability to shift or, you know, any conflict they may have with buildings or something like that, if the buildings are close to the roadway. I think my understanding is they're not going to get, reduce the number of trees overall. They're still going to have them, and that's another waiver. Again, I have no issue with this waiver.
Okay.
I was getting ahead of myself. So shifting to waiver four, that talks about a 40-foot spacing. And again, I think they discussed in here and they showed on the site plans, there's some, if you strictly have a tape measure at every 40 foot, you're going to run into some potential conflicts with streetlights, driveways, other things. If I understand the intent of the bylaw, I'm sorry, the subdivision regulation, you want to have a number of street trees. And I think having walked in some forests that were put together during the 1930s where they walked five feet, put a tree down, walked 10 feet, put another tree, and if you look a certain way, everything's a straight line. And I think some variation would be appropriate as long as the number of trees are there and as they're set in an appropriate location. I would have no problem with this waiver. Let's see. Waiver request five is talking about that sort of beast, slope off of the subdivision needs to be a certain grade. And you've got two locations where you have very major crossings of, like an intermainstream and a perennial stream, and they would like to use a retaining wall to minimize the impact essentially on either side to the wetlands into the areas along either stream, those resource areas. Again, I think how this is going to be under the control of the Conservation Commission, and my guess is the commission would want to minimize impacts to wetland areas. So as long as the retaining walls are designed appropriately, structurally, you know, designed and stuff, I have no waiver. I have no issue with this waiver. You want to make sure they have appropriate safety so people don't fall down the slope or something like that. The, you know, along the roadway, certainly there has to be some kind of guardrail and also for the pedestrians, it could be a wall. So if they designed appropriately and had the structural at construction, prior to construction, have a constructional design provided to the town, I would have no problem with this waiver.
Okay.
And Chairman, if I may, so waiver one, I agree. I think, I think getting a nice, a good letter from Frank, providing maybe some conditions in order to grant that waiver makes a world of sense and we can certainly get that at the next meeting, I believe. Waiver two, three, four, and five, I think really lend itself nicely to that whole discussion we've had in previous subdivisions about neighborhood character and that Frank kind of alluded to, you know, putting us one tree every 40 feet or what have you, doesn't really do that or achieve that. I know we'll get into more conditions about neighborhood character, about setbacks of houses and, and different styles, but I, you know, in my opinion, I would, I would recommend granting these waivers with, with the obvious caveat that throughout this process as we progress, you know, there might be an ability to look at this plan a little closer and say. You know, there might be an ability to look at this plan a little closer and say, well, we're, yeah, we're waiving the the overall forty-foot separation, but. You know, there's an opportune time to put a tree, you know, exit in one on page sheet seven right in front of this lot, so can we put one there and and what have you? But it gives you a little bit more flexibility as well to try and uh get a little creative here.
Okay.
And I think the applicant would be amenable to that condition a hundred percent.
I'd like to pick up on something you mentioned earlier. In regards to waiver request number one. Uh, similar to what we've done in another project. Um, you asked for um a specialized consultant to come in and uh and deal with waiver one during the construction process. Is that correct?
Jim?
Yes, I asked, sorry, I thought you were speaking to the applicant, yes, we're, I I it would be good to have a condition for that one, yes.
Could uh that same condition apply uh to waiver five if needed?
Yes, I think honestly, I think uh through the notice of intent process, they also will likely have someone monitoring the construction of that uh that retaining wall. But yeah, we certainly could make uh make some uh comment to that as as well.
And that is fair, fairly typical for a structural retaining wall.
Okay. Frank, any other concerns that you have?
Um, not on the waivers, no.
Anything else in the overall scope of the project on the presented?
Again, um.
You need more time?
I think I need more time. I don't think there's gonna be a big issue here um on the stuff. It looks like they've addressed it, but I want to look at it carefully and and eventually I want to make sure that what they've said, no offense to A E A. Uh, but what they've said is shown on the plans.
Okay.
No offense taken, we understand.
Discussion. And but by the way, just to clarify something, number one, I apologize, I was a minute late. But more importantly, at one point, there there's a gentleman out here named Steve O'Connell. Just for record, we are not related. I have to say that every meeting. Um, Phil? It looks like we, you know, we we'd like to discuss the waivers. Based on what you've heard, I'll ask you to chime in.
Well, the the first one we talked about, I definitely think, like I said before, I think we gotta have Frank come back and review it. Make sure all the, you know, the spirit of what we're trying to do here is there. The the spacing of the trees, number four, you know, as long as there's the same number of trees and can add to the neighborhood character. That's a positive thing. You know, with the idea that when we do see the plans that if, you know, we we'll take a look at it and, you know, like we said. Little while ago, that, you know, if we need to add one or two here and there just to. Take care of something, then that would be something I'd be okay with. You know, the the this number three kind of goes along with that. We can kind of look at that when we we see it a little bit tighter. The sidewalks, I guess I'd like to s- I I'm looking at the plans that were sent over. Um, with the trees and I guess I'd like to s- the sidewalks, where can we see a set of plans that have the sidewalks? And what side you're planning on putting them in?
Yeah, there should be a plan set that uh came over with the letter, Jim. I don't know if you have the ability to share your screen or whatnot, but uh Michael did provide a a an exhibit plan that had the trees shown in red.
Yeah, I see that, I just don't see the the side, if you could go through where the sidewalk, which side of the street you're gonna put, want your proposal to put the sidewalk and which side you're not.
I see.
Yes, it it's, it would be helpful to have a plan showing that, but essentially on road A, the the vast majority of road A, which is the through road, the sidewalk is on the north side. Uh, however, when you, we, as you move east on road A, um, and I I'm, again, this might be confusing, I'll describe it the best I can. It, the sidewalk does switch over to the other side, so essentially a portion of road A has the sidewalk on the north, the other portion has it on the south. And there's reasons for that, there's numerous reasons for that, where it might be in conflict with um a detention basin or an access road to a detention basin. We put the sidewalk where we felt it was going to be uninterrupted.
And those street trees are shown up on the forty-scale blowups uh in in the huge plan set. Uh, we just wanted to kind of give you an overall flavor of the the fact that there will be a a spattering of trees throughout this project.
Yeah, I'm looking at that now.
Show that exhibit, would it be helpful to display that on the screen?
Yeah, it would be.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear an answer to that.
It would be helpful.
I made you co-host, Mike, if you want to. Yep, go for it.
Just give me a moment. Do I have share abilities?
You do for the your video one, do you need it on your phone too?
No, just uh just on my screen, but it doesn't seem to be working for some reason, let me try it again.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yep. I believe it's at the end of this letter. Here we go, so let me zoom in. So obviously the red dots are are the tree locations. And again, not forty feet of spacing, but you'll see there are a considerable amount of trees um throughout the subdivision. What I also did was to provide a blow-up, you see this area right here? I enlarged that to give you a better flavor of what's happening. And you'll see, particularly with the triplex units where there's numerous driveways, and by the way, you're not even seeing all the utility connections, um light poles, transformer locations. Uh, but these are the things that interrupt that forty-foot spacing, so I tried to give you an example of how things work. So you'll see here that the spacing between the trees is actually uh over a hundred feet because of the the driveways, there's really no way to get them any closer. And where we could provide forty feet, we did. So. I think you'll see as you as you look at the plan, there's um no shortage of trees, there's quite a bit, uh there's quite a few trees here. Again, the spacing is um on average greater than forty feet, but um as we talked about earlier, we'd be open to a condition that would allow. A reevaluation essentially of of the exact tree locations uh prior to planting. When we know where all the utilities are and driveways and transformer locations, et cetera.
And this project is is unique in the fact that this is a an overlay district which reduces the 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 area of each lot. So it's kind of taking a a a subdivision regulation that's uh meant to be for all zoning districts. Um, it which with with much larger areas and frontage, this particular overlay district has much smaller frontage and much smaller lots. Uh, it just doesn't, it's like a square peg in a in a in a circular hole. So we're doing the best we possibly can with all the 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 available utilities and and driveways out there.
Can you bring up the sidewalks? Or highlight the sidewalks?
Uh, let me see if I can do that. Hopefully I have that plan here. Yeah, I have the the whole set here, so. Let me just move this. I'm gonna go to the G-series plans. So it's segmented, of course, but I need to use these forty-scale plans to show you the sidewalk location. So we're starting, this is Mill Street here to the left. The sidewalk on road A is here, it's on the south side. And it continues that way. I'll go to the next sheet on road A, bear with me. So here's road A again. Not allowing me to zoom in, oh, there we go, it's just a little sluggish. So your sidewalk, um, I'm trying to figure out where it jumps over. Oh, okay, so as road A continues, I should have stayed on the last sheet, but at at the first intersection. The the sidewalk jumps to the opposite side of the road, as you see here. So this is road A, I'm taking you down road A and showing you where the sidewalk is. And you can see here um where it branches off, the sidewalk being on the left side of the road here. Continuing on road A, the sidewalk is on the north side. This is the first crossing, the sidewalk remains on the north side. If I had one plan that showed all this clearly, I certainly would use that plan, but I'm forced to use these plans. Um, next sheet, so this is the continuation of road A. And the sidewalk, as I mentioned earlier, crosses here. And now it's on the south side of road A, and it continues on the south side um all the way out to Mechanic Street.
Okay. I have a couple of questions on the sidewalks, we'll get that back.
Okay.
The numbers. Dennis? Can I, can someone unmute Dennis?
Hello?
Yeah.
What was your question?
What are what are you, what's your feeling on um the sidewalks?
I don't have a problem with them if that's where they need to be located due to safety reasons, that they're, the engineers already figured out.
Okay. Brian? In in general, on the sidewalks and the waivers?
So I I would just, um, I think my my comment would be that um I would pick up on what Jim was saying in terms of. I think that the, you know, the priority for us in this project has been sort of the character and feel of this neighborhood and not. Plunking down a cookie cutter subdivision. I know that um Mark understands that, the applicant understands that, and and they're working in good faith to to make this a unique um neighborhood in our town, so I appreciate that. Um, but and and. So um the mechanical application of a certain distance of feet from trees, I'm not too concerned about, provided that the plan. Gives us the character and we're not losing trees and, you know, one of my concerns would be where there is a lot of driveways. That's exactly where you would want something to sort of break that up and and to make it. You know, aesthetically pleasing and and make it um make it work in in regards to character and all of that. So generally speaking, what I would, what I would suggest is is that a mechanical application of the rules is not really what we're looking for. What we're looking for is uh livability and uh quality of the the construction. With regard to the sidewalks, I would say it's the same thing. I would, my preference would be that the sidewalk remains on the same side of the road unless it's absolutely necessary, particularly for. People that uh, you know, rely on um the sidewalks for um their transportation. It is very, you know, I envision that this road at some point, people are gonna learn that, hey, I can kind of cut off. A corner and some, a couple of lights and sneak through this area and um I wouldn't want people having to cross the road. Unless it was sort of necessary to do so. And and Jim, is there some discussion about a a shared use path perhaps running through the site?
Right, so you did catch that uh comment from Don DiMartino, so it's certainly, you know, a discussion the board could have, uh, uh. So the the, I think the reason it was brought up is uh, you know, somewhat of continuity. I know this board wasn't involved in it, but the the apartments, the Curtis Apartments that is uh planned to be constructed next year. Um, on Mechanic Street, kind of where the this this road uh road A comes out on. Uh, has a shared, a ten-foot shared use path uh on there, so it starts essentially from, if you guys are familiar with Mass Diesel, uh kind of near where uh PJ's is. Um, and runs to this intersection. Um, and in addition, the town center, uh which uh is a DOT uh reviewed road requires a ten-foot shared use path. Uh, now, we don't have ten-foot shared use path anywhere else in town, uh but. That's what was required there, so uh Don made a comment about which you, which would be preferred, uh, you know, whether you want continuity to continue for. The ten-foot or, you know, again, we have a sidewalk and uh what I'm assuming would be stamped bike lane um on the on road A. Um, you know, it's it's, I guess, the board's preference. My only comment would be that a ten-foot shared use path, one, doesn't have to be ten-foot, but all does create quite a bit more uh pavement. And kind of a disturbance area that um, you know, with two crossings uh might be an issue. Uh, so that's that's just my my concern about that is all.
Yeah, so again, I I I, you know, uh, I think the priority is to make this. This new neighborhood have character and if. However we get there, I I am fine with.
I I think if I could, that those are great suggestions and great points, and if if you're familiar with Kevin Lobster and the product um that he builds, uh, if you're not, that is, I encourage you to look. Because he places a very strong emphasis on on quality of construction and creating a livable place. Uh, I think anybody who knows his work would agree with that, so Kevin's not looking to plant less trees, he 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 will definitely do the right thing. We just have to understand the constraints that we're dealing with.
Yeah, and I and I will concur with you that Kevin's been a great partner with us on a number of projects in town and and. We don't have the same concerns as we might have that we've had with other projects in town. Where the same commitment to quality is not there, so but and I do appreciate that.
Liz?
Yeah, I'm gonna echo what um the rest of the board has already said. I think for the first waiver, we need more time. Um, the sidewalks, it would be great if it were contiguous, but I understand the the limitations of that with the project. And, you know, I don't really have a an issue with the tree spacing or anything like that. I think it's, you know, I think that's perfectly fine um for those waivers.
Dennis, you're all set, Phil, anything else you want to add?
No.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, while we're on kind of the neighborhood character, I know this isn't one of the things that we've uh was on the list, but. One thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention was uh was lighting, street lighting. Um, so, you know, we've moved to LED lighting, um, uh, road A certainly is a main thoroughfare, so I'm not really. Talking about that, but the two loop roads that uh are are in the neighborhood. Um, I know I've sat through a number of uh select board meetings where they discuss um reduction of of lighting. Maybe through monetary reasons or or just kind of uh, there's a lot of it on on the the right of way. I did want to note it just simply because this is an overlay district, a rather unique development, it is denser, there's likely to be a lot of residential lighting already present. So I don't know if if the board is interested in maybe reducing the requirement there. This, I, my understanding of the applicant is simply meeting the requirement, um, and uh, you know, perhaps we we might be interested in and at least. Maybe looking at a lighting plan that slightly reduces it some.
In that regards, Jim, and I know a lot of us have spoken about the flavor of the neighborhood. Uh, I'm assuming there's gonna be um expensive units. I also would assume that it may be viable for the builder to um. Provide um hookups for electrical so they can put a post at the end of the driveway. That's helped with reducing overall street lighting. And that could be supplemented by people in their own um posts at the end of the driveways. Or we can leave that upon the homeowner. But again, for the flavor, um, I don't want to watch an overabundance of LED lighting in this. Again, and you have the other board members. I think would add a flavor to have, you know, a little. Some more than what we may be required.
Uh, so just, uh, Bill, if I could, if I could, um, I'm. Happy to 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 look at whatever they they might propose, um, again. It's all about livability and and I certainly don't want add to light pollution and all of that stuff, so. Uh, I'm, if they're willing to. I'm, if they're willing to put it forward, I'm happy to consider it, but.
So I think that's something we can look at in the next.
Yeah.
Yeah. What we, what we can do is we can bring that comment to the applicant. I think he's going to be amenable to looking into that. Individual incandescent light posts at, at the homes, at the edge of the driveway, see how those, you know, lumens illuminate the roadway. And maybe we can eliminate streetlights in areas that have continuous homes and maybe in the areas that are vacant of homes just due to wetland crossings or whatnot. Maybe we can just limit the streetlights to, to areas that aren't lit up by the driveway lights by individual homes.
Right.
What I'd like to do next, and I think we're at the point now, or they want to vote on the waivers individually. Sorry, I would entertain a motion on waiver number one.
So Bill, are we, are we tabling one for?
Well, I, I, we need a table or we need a motion to.
Well.
Jim, do we need a motion on these waivers?
Well, if you, if you want to table one, you certainly could just take that and then we can move to two through five.
Okay. Entertain a motion on waiver number two.
So I'll move that. So I, again, so the emphasis here is not a mechanical application of the rules to get a result. It's, it's to, to, you know, build a neighborhood that has some character right from the start. So in granting these, I would say that they're granted with the caveat that they're that there will be consideration and adjustments made in consideration of the, of the spirit in which we're going. And I don't know if that makes sense. Does that make sense to you, Mark?
Yeah, it does. And I think that the key to understand here with this waiver is that there will not be any disconnect with the, with the sidewalks. It's just going to be the fact that the sidewalk will be only on one side or the other. There just won't be dual sidewalks, parallel sidewalks on both sides of the street. We've done everything we can to keep it to the same side of the street, but in certain areas where we can't, we just want the ability obviously to, to cross the street. But in no means will it be, will there be a disconnect with the sidewalk system itself. It's just very standard with Julia Drive and Macy Estates. Each of those two subdivisions recently, this board has granted that sidewalk on one side as opposed to both sides. It's again, it's just a belts and suspenders waiver, you know, city streets back in the day have sidewalks on both sides. The more rural towns out here in Central Mass don't have any sidewalks, but all the subdivisions recently have had one sidewalk. And that's just basically what we're asking for in this particular waiver.
So if I may, Bill, just the only thing that I would add to this particular one, then, I really would like to see it, unless it's absolutely impossible, really would like to see a contiguous sidewalk on one side. And I understand that there could be realistic limitations on that, but if there is a way to do that, that would be my preference. Just, you know, anyone that's ever walked down a road or jogged or rode a bike or knows somebody that doesn't drive and that they rely on the sidewalks, that if you're crossing back and forth, that, that really is not really something that, I guess my point is, it's just, I would really like to see one contiguous, absent a very good reason why that can't happen.
And we have done that, Brian. We have, we've actually done that interior of the subdivision is basically Road A, just based upon the triplex units that just in some, a couple of areas, not a lot, just a couple of areas, just don't make sense based upon all the hydrants, the utilities, the electric boxes to put it on the opposite side. So we basically, you know, use Mill Street as a, a starting point. And Mill Street has a sidewalk on the south side of Mill Street. And we just wanted to continue that, may keep that contiguous as we came into the subdivision until a point at which just too many mechanicals came involved and we crossed the street. But the vast majority or all of the roads B, C, and D are all on one contiguous side of the street.
It's really the, the main road that I would be the most concerned with people having to cross back and forth.
Yep.
So Mr. Chairman, if I could, I, as you were talking, I had the, I have the plans on another computer and I was evaluating the sidewalk locations a bit further. And as Mark stated, the sidewalk on Mill Street is on the south side. So we're sort of stuck with that constraint. So we are forced to at least have one crossing on Road A. There's no way around that. And then as Mark stated, again, well, there are two tolls. So I don't know if I said that already, but there are only two crossings on the entire length of Road A. One on the west end where Mill Street meets, it must, there must be one crossing. The other location, as Mark stated, is to avoid all of the driveways associated with the triplex units. So I think those are compelling reasons and I certainly respect the reasoning behind wanting it on one side. But at the same time, I think there are compelling reasons to, to incorporate those two crossing points. It's not as if we have, you know, a crossing every few hundred feet. It's a, it's a very long roadway and there are two crossing points.
And those, and those crossing points, to Michael's explanation, at those triplexes, you have three different homeowners with, with, with their garages at the, at the end of their driveways. So in safety's sake, you know, that's one of the reasons in addition to the, to the, all the utilities, to put that crossing on the other side of the street so that you don't have that pedestrian conflict with, with cars coming in and out of their garages.
Can I ask a question, please? In regards to, you don't think it's feasible to limit the crossings to just one? I'm just throwing out there for discussion purposes.
I think for safety's sake and the reason stated earlier, as Michael explained, I think two would make more of a safety value engineered sidewalk location. It's just, it's, it's, it's more feasible to have these two locations to, to be safer on the opposite side of the street.
Okay. From a safety standpoint, I would like appropriate signage and markings.
Yes.
Those crossings.
Yeah, they're all going to be striped. They're all going to be signed.
And then also in addition, suspected with new developments, the rumble strips?
Yep. The tactile paths, the ADA sidewalks, all of that has been incorporated into the design plans.
Okay.
I just said, just add real quick, Mark, you're bringing the sidewalk down to meet with Lincoln's sidewalk, correct?
Uh, yes, correct. Yep. That was the other, at the opposite end of Mechanic Street, Lincoln had put in a sidewalk that we're going to connect into as well.
Bill, can I ask just a clarifying question? Mark, is, is your safety concern with regard to the driveways by the triplex? Is that just people leaving and coming into the driveway? That's the safety concern?
Yeah. So if, if you're walking along the sidewalk, there's two reasons in front of the triplexes is there's three driveways, obviously, and then there's three sets of utilities. It just makes sense for two reasons, utilitarian and pedestrian versus vehicles coming in and out of their driveways. Less, less conflict.
I think it's also, I think it's also aesthetic as well. It's, in my opinion, when you have a sidewalk that crosses driveways in succession, it just doesn't look very good. So back to that, you know, neighborhood character. I think the sidewalk, again, in my personal opinion, looks better when it's interrupted as least as possible. So you have a bitumenous sidewalk crossing driveway after driveway after driveway. It just aesthetically is not a very pleasing scenario.
Can you, Mark, explain the utility, the, the utility aspect of your concerns?
There's going to be, obviously the sewer, the water, the gas is going to be shut off valves for the water and the, and the gas. And those are generally in the middle of a sidewalk, depending upon where their location is going to be. So you just don't have that in a continuous asphalt sidewalk where utilities are not present.
So what, what would that mean? If, for example, if, if the sidewalk did go through there, what, what is the?
There would be gas gates. There would be water gates routinely maintained by the water and gas companies that have to come in and come out, chip away, chipping away at the sidewalk itself.
As opposed to what?
Not having water gates or sewer gates or, or gas gates.
Or fewer.
Yeah, fewer, correct.
Yeah, I, I, I don't. And, and, and you can educate me, but I still think the benefit of having a continuous sidewalk to people that need the sidewalks. But I could be wrong. I, I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that one then.
Like you said, we'll revisit it, Brian, and just make sure that in, in every, each of the two cases, it's absolutely necessary or at least more beneficial. And we can, you know, just show, show it to you that the reason for those two crossings is, is valid.
Yeah, I, I think I would appreciate that. And just again, subject to the proviso of what we're looking for overall and the concerns that we state in this meeting.
Yeah. And to this, to this particular waiver request, it's not saying that we're not going to provide a sidewalk. It's just that this particular regulation states that you, you need two sidewalks, one on each side of the road. So I think we're going to get there to what you, you, you point out. We just want the ability to only have one sidewalk and not two on both sides.
Gotcha.
Favor of one sidewalk as opposed to two?
Correct.
I would, I would like to see reducing maybe to one crossing. Let me throw something out there. I'm not a land designer or developer. You mentioned the fact that the sidewalks would have cutaways for services. What of those boxes were put on the properties? The owner's property?
Typically, they're not. I mean, they're, they're within the street's right of way so that the town has the ability to, to either shut off or turn on their water service and gas service. Putting them on private property is generally, or at least in my experience, not done. Their town, their town utilities.
Mr. Chairman, on the sidewalks, if I can comment, I'm just thinking the families I see walking up and down the sidewalks in my neighborhood, a lot of times have small children with them. Having a street crossing in the middle of a sidewalk, to me, doesn't sound like a good idea. I guess I'd like to see maybe the, the plans that go along with that, a little bit more formalized on one sheet, just to see what it is. And, you know, with tying out, going into, you know, getting to the center of town, getting, you know, the, the mechanic street piece of it, the crossing from one side to the other. I guess I'm still uncomfortable with, with that. Brian brings up some good points.
And again, this waiver isn't suggesting where the location of the sidewalk is. This is just basically saying not two, just one.
Right.
I, I think if I could just add one last comment, again, I've been studying the plans throughout this discussion. And there are triplexes that reoccur. And we actually have one section where the sidewalk would be along the triplex. So Mark, I hope you don't mind me saying, but I think we could eliminate one of the crossings.
Okay.
And it would really sort of not really matter too much, for lack of a better way to say it. There's one crossing, as I described earlier, that we, we have to live with. But I think we can limit it to one crossing, if that would appease the board a little bit more.
That would increase my comfort level. Brian and Phil?
Yeah, I, I, again, I'm happy to, to take a look and see what, what we have. I'm, I'm comfortable with just one side of the, that roadway having a sidewalk. I just want it, to the extent that we can make it contiguous, that would be my preference.
Let me ask a question that hasn't been asked. Initially, we said, the reason we started with sidewalks and a certain side of the street was there are already in existence on Mill Street. Do we have plans to rehab, rehabilitate Mill Street?
As a town or as part of this development?
As part of this development.
As part of this development, we're going to be regrading the end of Mill Street and resurfacing up to the point where we are at our common street connection. And we were going to be adding a sidewalk or, or, yeah, continuing the sidewalk, if you will, down Mill Street. So, yeah, there will be Mill Street improvements.
Okay. What if we were to do this? What if we were to flip the sidewalk at Mill Street, have it the north side? Can we leave everything on the north side? All the way?
It comes from the center of town, Bill, you know. It, it, it's a very natural transition where it comes along town halls, property, up to the light, and then it goes, it stays on the same side of the street. And it goes down Mill Street on the south side. There is a crossing at Mill Street that continues, continues along 126. But it, it just wouldn't make sense to rip up the entire sidewalk that's on Mill Street and build a new one on the north side when we're eventually going to come back to the south side.
Hypothetically, if we did it on the north side, could we have everything in that development on one side of the street?
No, no.
Might I suggest that we, I'm sorry, Mark, might I suggest that we just put together a quick exhibit? I don't, to Mark's point, I don't think it will affect the waiver. If the board can agree that they, they want a sidewalk on one side, I'll put together an exhibit that shows the entire subdivision and the entire sidewalk network. And we'll do whatever we can to, to keep it on one side. And if we do have crossings, we'll have a good explanation for that. But at least you'll have something to educate you as to what the thought process is.
Okay.
Mike, if I may, if I may recommend, Si, if you wanted to highlight the sidewalk, the, maybe on this, on the tree exhibit, as well as maybe where the lights are, just those three amenities.
That's one.
Okay.
So the board can see all, all three of those. I think, I don't think that would be too crowded and could give them a good sense of all those amenities there, how they interact.
That's planning. That's coming from a town planner right there. I like that.
So right now, we, we passed on waiver one. We're having a discussion on waiver two. You were thinking of putting a motion in place?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll move to waive the, to grant the waiver of waiver two, subject to the caveat that, you know, we're really looking for character and all of that.
We're not requiring sidewalks on two sides of the street.
Correct.
And minimizing crossings wherever feasible. Based on some.
And I'll, I'll just, just mention here that, you know, the end, the end result of these, when you, when you do make a motion to grant these waivers, it's simply going to be written in a final decision. So, you know, the, the granting of the waiver right now of one sidewalk on one side of the road, you know, I, I think it's good that Brian's mentioning the caveat now to, to tell Mark and Mike that they need to work on, you know, get on one side of the street, but ultimately, you know, we'll work through that before we get to a final decision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. With regard to waiver request number two. Do you have sidewalks on one side of the with an explanation of actually limiting crosswalks to no more than one and a description of why that one is needed? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Waiver request number three, which deals with the distance of trees?
So I'll move to grant waiver number three, subject to the caveats that we discussed previously.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of granting waiver number three, based on the discussion, the discussion points of this evening, please signify by saying aye.
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 Request number four?
I think, I think we missed one. Three, three was basically the, the street trees in relation to the, the houses and five feet back. I think we missed one. Three was basically the street trees in relation to the houses five feet back of the sidewalk. And you can just vote it on four.
That's right, Mark.
Okay, excuse, I flipped it. My mistake. So the previous should be clarified for waiver number four, not waiver number three. And then waiver number three, what trees are provided within five feet of the back of the sidewalk for low impact.
So again, I'll move to grant that waiver, subject to the proviso that we're looking for alternatives, suggestions with regard to character and all of that stuff that we talked about.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I did get the request for waiver number five with regards to looking the off-guard slopes to minimize impacts to wetland resources.
So is that one that we should table?
I don't think so, Brian. I think this is just basically gives us the ability to put retaining walls at the wetland crossings as opposed to a standard three-to-one slope and filling in more wetlands. It just basically gives us a waiver from the standard cross-section in the subdivision regs.
Frank was in agreement with that, with the caveat that when we look at waiver number one, if you have an expert come in, that also look at the sloping.
Yep, and in addition, I would just, you know, with the, again, another caveat that Conservation certainly would be looking at this closely and could give us any additional input and advice.
Okay, so I would move to grant that waiver, subject to what we just discussed.
This motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion on the floor in regards to waiver five, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Does the applicant have anything else they want to present this evening?
I don't think so, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the board tonight for taking the painstaking task and kind of going through the waivers, and we look forward to hearing from Frank's.
Before we go any further, though, I think for a meeting, discuss waiver number one, based on Frank's additional input.
So I think if, you know, I think the applicant got a sense of, you know, how the board feels with waiver number one, we certainly could need at the next meeting to nail that down. You know, the only, the other outstanding items I see here is, you know, there's a few things in the peer review, obviously, that between Frank and the applicant need to nail down. The applicant certainly does need to submit to the ZBA for earth removal. And I think this board will want to provide some insight for that. So, you know, I think the board could certainly meet either at the next meeting or table it for some time until the earth removal. The board and applicant can certainly discuss that. I really only see one item really getting nailed down in the immediate future, and the rest kind of waiting until we can get more insight from ZBA and maybe CONCOM as well.
So Jim, is the ZBA meeting, is it February?
So it wouldn't be February. It would likely be the March. I haven't received the formal application for it just yet.
So Brian, as far as a permitting timeframe goes on our end, we're obviously getting some great information here tonight from this board. We're going to meet with Conservation and go through their two or three waivers and see if we can get some final design criteria from them. And then we'll have another third revised set of drawings that we're going to bring back to you, CONCOM and zoning. So we're hoping to get on for the first meeting in March in zoning.
Okay, so we can push this out to March?
I would be comfortable with that.
Yeah, I don't see really a need, other than the fact that, you know, yeah, the applicant can revise the plans, nail down any of the engineering aspects that BSC may still have some concerns over. We'll be able to provide some insight after receiving the, actually, may I recommend the first meeting in March? Actually, no, the last meeting in February, because at that point, I would have the application for the ZBA meeting. And I could provide that to you guys in advance, so you could see and provide any insight to the ZBA prior to their meeting. I think that might be beneficial for all parties.
Okay. Yeah, anyone from the public want to provide any input? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, planning board.
A two-minute break before the next topic, one minute break.
Real quick, man, just get a motion to continue to February 25th.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I just want to grab a drink.
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Steve, you want to pull up a plan at all?
Sure, I might just pull up the landscape plan. You want me to start with the old presentation slideshow or just go right to landscaping? It kind of shows the site.
Yeah, the landscape plan is probably sufficient for the discussion today.
I've got it up. Let me know when you're ready for me to share. I can just wait till we kind of do some dialogue.
Sure, yeah, you have the ability to whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you.
Jim, the next item is the public hearing on what we're calling Zero Maple Street. Can you bring us up to speed on that?
Yep, absolutely. So at the last meeting, we got a kind of an overview of the site and the proposal. And, you know, we, I think the board provided some good, you know, initial comments for the applicant to produce. In your packet tonight, you have a landscape plan that's, I believe, is a direct reflect of the comments from the board to produce anything you could do to improve upon that buffer. In addition, you do have peer review responses from, again, BSC. And that peer review responses for the stormwater, I believe the applicant is is requesting not really to dive into those just yet this evening. I think we could table that to the next meeting. But for tonight, you have the landscape plan in front of you, as well as you do have a letter from one of the abutters from Maple Brook Condominiums. I know he's talked about a number of different items that we could, that I know the board's already brought up, but we could certainly touch on some more in terms of, you know, impacts to neighbors.
Jim, would you like to, let's address the letter first, because I think it'll bring up some of the items we want to discuss. Review later, January 13th, was in our packages. Regards to item number one. The letter of objection.
Yep, so item number one, in terms of the suitability of, or the buildability of the lot, the applicant has provided evidence that it is a buildable lot. The abutter certainly, you know, has the right to challenge that in any appeal of a decision. He does make a good point that it is a unique lot that's carved out, it appears, of a bigger lot. But the applicant has certainly provided evidence of it being a buildable lot, and that has been vetted by the building inspector as well as the town council. So we've certainly looked at that already.
Item number two.
One second, I'm just pulling it up again. I lost it there.
I assume Robert is here?
I'm not certain if he is here this evening. I know I did speak with him directly on the phone. He was, he wasn't certain if he was going to be able to attend. I told him he certainly doesn't have to.
I'm here.
Oh, good. Okay, and Bob's here. It's one there. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you want Bob to ask those comments to the board, you certainly could.
Bob, can you address item number two?
Item number two is relative to the ability of tractor trailers to actually turn on this particular parcel singularly without exceeding and going into, as depicted, the abutting property. And that carries on whether or not that there's another agreement in terms of any sort of easements or shared right-of-ways on the abutters property. The major concern is that at some point in time, if these two particular properties are not amiable with one another, then our tractor trailers aren't even going to enter an egress this very, very small parcel.
Jim, have you any chance to look at that?
Yep, yeah, I would recommend if we wanted to just run down the list first, and then we could certainly have the applicant respond to some of these, as well as I'm sure the board's going to have additional.
That'd be fine.
Do you want me to run through them?
I can, if you like. Not a problem.
Jim, go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, there's a depiction of 19 parking spaces. And, you know, there's a challenge of the real suitability of those parking spaces and whether or not, you know, those will actually materialize over time, I think, is certainly a question for the applicant. Let's see.
One of the key points on the parking space is that the parking spaces that are drawn, the 19 parking spaces, the spaces that are immediately to the west on the plan, at least that I'm looking at, half of those parking spaces are not on the sub parcel. They are actually drawn on the abutting parcel.
And then, in addition to that, kind of, in that same vein, you know, if those parking spaces are there, it really does create a tight parking lot for tractor trailers to make that maneuver. And, you know, it would be really more conducive to smaller vehicles such as vans.
In regards to parking spaces, don't we, for groundwater, want more, less asphalt?
Yes, yeah, I think I know where you're going with that, yes. So they certainly the board has historically, you know, favored shared parking to produce less asphalt. So that's certainly something that the board has granted in the past, so reduction in parking requirements. So there is a balance there, I guess, is, I guess, the point between the board and the abutter there. So we certainly could have that conversation. Additionally, the loading dock. Now, it states it encroaches on the sideline requirement. The dumpster clearly extends past the property line. The loading dock proposed on the south side would have direct negative impact in the quality of life of the residents. The noise alone from the tractor trails backing up is certainly an issue, and we should discuss hours of operation. Some of the grading plans show work into 100-foot buffer zone, which is not allowed. So we can have that conversation. That's not necessarily the case in terms of, it's not on the premier property, but I can get into more detail for the board on that one. The board should definitely, you know, and we have talked about it already, and I'm sure we'll talk about it more, about light and sound abatement. You know, it's, especially with the dock being on the south side, though that is the corner of both of the Maple Brook is nearby, but also the individual across the street. See, snow management is certainly something we should be getting into. Catch basins are depicted outside the frontage and sideline setbacks, as well as elevated port extension of the loading docks to the northwest corner. I don't know, Bob, I don't know if you want to get into that a little more. I'm not certain.
I brought up the catch basins because I did not know whether or not they were allowed in, outside the sideline.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And the loading dock that wraps around the buildings to the north, not the loading dock, excuse me. Well, it's a concrete pad that wraps around to the north. That is definitely within the sideline setback requirement. So I didn't know if elevated concrete pads of that nature are allowed.
I see. Okay, and then the last thing is talking about, certainly when DPW completed the paving on South Maple Street and how it relates to the Maple Brook private way. I know I've had a discussion with Bob Pryor, and I know DPW is aware of. I don't know where it stands right now, but I'll certainly, you know, push, discuss that with them further. But as it relates to this comment, you know, a potential runoff down South Maple to further impact their driveway. That's the list from Mr. Inguante.
I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Good evening. Thank you. On behalf of the owner and applicant, my name is Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering. So, Mr. Chairman, would you like me, I have not seen this letter. I just took some notes as these items were mentioned.
Actually, I just touched into what was said in the first that we addressed it. I certainly did not mean to ambush you with the letter. I apologize if it had not been provided to you before.
That's okay. I didn't catch everything you just said at the beginning. What would you like me to do?
I didn't want me to ambush you.
Oh, no worries.
I think, Bill, if we could, I think, you know, a number of those items that Mr. Inguante brought up will certainly be discussed throughout the board's comments. So I don't know if we want to let the applicant provide an update and an overview of the project.
I would.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. So we are in receipt of the BSC group review comment letter. We've made substantial plan revisions to address these, many of which are straightforward and easy to accommodate. What we were waiting on to submit a wholesale revision was department-related comments. And we did just get some correspondence from Jim regarding Fire Chief, and the only comment is about the placement of a hydrant, so we are happy to address that. The only other comment from departments we received was questioning the size of the water main from the DPW, which we have confirmed and updated on the plan. So as far as I'm concerned, we've received really all the comments, you know, I expect to receive for us to be able to provide a revised plan incorporating department comments, BSC group review letter comments, department comments, BSC group review letter comments, anything, perhaps we discuss tonight, if we get that far. I guess if I had to, I don't really feel the need to go through BSC's comments, I don't necessarily have you know, any questions, I think we need input from the board. Maybe with the exception of one. And if you don't mind, that would be number, comment number two. I know that your bylaw states that open sedimentation and recharge basins are preferred to underground infiltration, and as you know, on this site, we've got two underground infiltration stormwater systems. One identified as infiltration bed one in the front of the building along South Maple Street, that collects only roof water, which is clean water. And the other infiltration bed is under the proposed parking area, which collects water from the other parts of the site. And, you know, adequately treats it, et cetera, meets all of the stormwater management standards, with the exception of the setback from the septic system, which we are revising. So I just, I guess I just need to know from the board if there's an objection to these underground infiltration beds. I think what I can tell you before you respond is that the soils here are fantastic, I mean, I am a conservative engineer when it comes to calculations and assumptions. And I'm always a little bit concerned about, you know, some things engineers can do, and sometimes underground infiltration is one of them, but I do not have that concern here, these soils do not get any better. The roof water is clean water, it goes into a separate infiltration bed. And, you know, it's a small system, a small lot. And so I just would like a little bit of direction from the board on that particular subject.
So, Bill, I know Frank is here, I'm sure could speak to it, I'll just note that we do typically prefer open air drainage systems, but you know, that's part of our subdivision regulations. This being a private entity that would have to own and operate, you know, a robust O and M plan, just to make sure that they're cognizant of the fact that it needs to be maintained, I think would be my only recommendation.
Right.
Again, we looked at this, the design is appropriate. And that the maintenance program that's in the drainage report, I think, if all would provide the adequate ongoing operation for this infiltration system. We have no issues, we wanted to bring it up because as Jim said, there's a regulation that says that's not supposed to happen. So.
Yeah, what I would like to do, and I, again, I apologize. Steve, what I'd like to have you do is have an opportunity for you to look at the the letter from Robert. Based on the information presented tonight, it'd be good to touch base with Jim, so we can address those points at our next meeting. I don't think it's fair to do it this evening, since this is the first time we've had an opportunity look at the letter, but I can tell you, Jim, the dumpster, is something we've done, is that feasible to move to work?
I think, yeah, so moving on from the waiver request, I think you kind of got a feel for the board what that is, but the dumpster, as the chairman's mentioning, and I think, Steve, maybe that's something you could address there. You know, not only the abutter bringing it up, but I think we all kind of looked at it and said, you can't get it on your property, you know, is there any opportunity there to get that there?
Yeah, I think there may be, we're happy to look at that, we just thought that was the most logical spot for, you know, pickup, you know, dumpster truck maneuverability and access and convenience, but, yeah, I mean, and the reality is, is, you know, I don't think any business anticipated to be in this building is going to produce a lot of trash, it may not even be a dumpster, but we just wanted, we didn't want to be too aggressive and make too many assumptions, but, you know, we want to make those accommodations, but yeah, we're happy to look at that.
And Steve, your location of the loading dock, can that be flipped?
I really don't, I really don't think it can from, you know, a truck access, you know, and I, you know, it's not a trucking facility. You know, the loading dock is there as a provision when needed, oftentimes, things that will come in, you know, inventory that'll come into this facility is going to come on smaller trucks, get loaded with a hydraulic, you know, lift off the back. But, you know, I to think of it as a loading dock, you know, seems it's borderline extreme, it's like a loading platform.
Okay.
I just, I can understand the abutter's concerns when maybe they didn't see the original meeting, or you, you know, when you don't know what you know, you just see the loading dock and you think, well, it's going to be heavy truck use. You know, talking one truck a day, you know, maybe one every other day. And then if they even use that loading platform half the time, that's what we're talking about. If it was, you know, perhaps we could do some screening, I mean, there, there's vegetation, there's a significant area of vegetation that's between the condominiums and this property. We could try to supplement that screening, you know, on this project's property, if that would be helpful.
Jim, speaking of the screening, what is the distance to the loading dock to the apartments? Do you remember the triangle like that?
Yeah, so the, the distance between the, yeah, the property and the closest residence, I believe, is just a little, or just under 200 feet. And as Stephen mentioned, there is a lot of vegetation in between, however, it's not on their property, so there's not really a lot of control over that vegetation. So I think certainly supplemental vegetation could be extremely beneficial at this location if it wasn't able to be flipped to the other side there.
Any other board members have any comments?
If you, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I saw the objection letter from the condominium association. And maybe just a suggestion for Steve. I did a rough look at what the existing drainage area that runs from this site into South Maple Street. And it, what the after-proposed construction has done, I think a I think there's a reduction in the overall area that runs into the roadway, and therefore a reduction in the runoff. It might be really handy to be able to demonstrate that, if you could, showing what the before and after area of runoff is to the roadway.
Sure. Yeah, because nothing leaves in the post-construction scenario. But yeah, we can illustrate that, so it's, you know, kind of illustrative, absolutely.
Stephen, I know you had mentioned you have the landscape plan available to pull up, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you think it would be good to take a peek at that.
Hold on. Thank you.
Okay, I am going to share my screen. Okay. So here is a copy of the landscape plan submitted, prepared by Alice Webb, landscape architect from Earth Design. I've done a lot of work with Alice and you know, she familiarized herself with the bylaw and prepared this plan, it consists of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 trees and about over 70 shrubs. And I think it really kind of beefs up the front of the property, you know, which will be, you know, probably the biggest change for residential houses across the street. But I think this will be really attractive, especially with the, my opinion, the attractiveness of the architecture that was put into the thought of the building facade. So, you know, I guess we just hope you agree, we're happy to make some modifications to this. I think what we talked about already would be a little bit of screening on that southerly side adjacent to that loading platform.
Okay. And again, just to pick up on something you mentioned earlier. You may be lucky at one to maybe one truck a day, every two days?
Yeah, exactly. You know, you'll see, we'll see FedEx, see FedEx or UPS daily, but a truck that drops off, delivers inventory at the most would be one a day, more likely than that is going to be every other day.
Can I ask a quick question, Bill?
Certainly.
Thank you. So with regard to the applicant and the intended use of the property. So is the, I know the applicant is yet to be identified, but will they own that building, or are they tenants of that building?
They will be, they will be tenants, the, I am working for the owner who will build the building and and they have a lease signed, and also signed in non-disclosure. But the occupant will be a tenant.
Okay, and then in terms of so this particular tenant is certainly not the permanent, I would assume, permanent tenant of this facility, and we're we're permitting a use, and whereas this particular tenant will have minimal truck deliveries. I think that we need to, you know, to address some of the concerns raised, and I don't think there's much we can do to address some of those concerns. We are permitting a use and not, and not a particular company. So in terms of sound and all of that, and the trucks coming in and coming out.
That's a fair statement. The, I mean, I think you could say that about all of the businesses along South Maple. Even if FWB owns that building, they could move out and lease it to somebody else. I think that that's almost always the scenario with commercial industrial buildings, unless it's a very specialized, you know, laboratory or medical related, but even then. But, you know, your point is fair, I mean, I think, I think I'd be lying if I said that we didn't need to consider that, but I also think that this is the, this is being more or less designed with the tenant in mind, with some of their requests. It's a long-term lease, over 10 years. So hopefully that's worth something.
Steve, is it fair to say, let me just say something, Brian, that this building in essence was almost built to spec for this type of tenant? Low volume, small for traffic, small vehicle traffic, limited off-street business? You're only going to this building with a particular purpose in mind, correct?
Yeah, for the most part, I mean, it's a, it's kind of a standard clear-span metal building, but some of the features in the details of it were considered based on the tenant's needs, operation, demands, employees, you know, traffic volume, you know, placement of door locations, some of the fit out of the small office area, so I mean, it's a metal building, but the details of it were certainly tailored to the tenant.
And that the road most likely be a similar type of tenant.
If this tenant were to walk away from their lease and, you know, in year five, another tenant that would be interested in this space would have to deal with the aspects of this building, unless they were to do a significant, you know, remodel, and which I'm probably caused them to potentially come back to the board, depending on the extent, but that's, you know, unlikely.
That makes me feel comfortable.
If I could, excuse me, interject again, I noticed on this plan that a proposed access, construction, and utility easement is shown that has meets and bounds descriptions on it. Is this going to be an easement that ends up being filed with the registry deeds, for example, so that may address some access issues that have come up earlier?
Yeah, so when our original plan set, there was a specific plan showing those easements, the landscape architect kept those layers turned on when she prepared this plan, but I'm glad you noticed that, because it will, there is an easement in place with the abutting landowner of the premier equipment, so that will be a recordable easement with not just the plan, but also easement deed.
A sort of question, I'm really overstepping my bounds now. On the side of the development, the easement that's in the other property where the dumpster is right now and the loading dock, is there an ability to put in landscaping if needed, a screening?
We would be, I would be happy to do that, and I know that won't be a problem, that will absolutely be permissible.
I'm going to shut up now before I get into trouble, but anyway.
Thank you for your input. Jim, what's the best step forward?
Well, I think you do have some, you've assigned some homework to the applicant in terms of some responses to some of the items brought up tonight so far. You know, I think we, you know, in terms of the plan set, there's some additional landscaping that's certainly going to be necessary. And then if some other outstanding items, just kind of one question here for you. So you're right, as Brian mentioned, you're permitting it for warehouse use, not a tenant. So that would be anything that would certainly be put into the decision, any different use, obviously, would have to come back to the board. Any, you know, change of the interior of the building really probably wouldn't come back to the board, it would depend, but it would have to be a significant change. One item that I did note is if the dock can't be changed from one side of the building to the other, which I'm still not exactly sure why it couldn't be, but if it can't be, you know, I think, I think it would be important to know how you're going to mitigate noise and and only because that is the highest sensitive sensitivity area being, you know, the resident, that's the corner of the residents on both sides, or across from South Maple and Maple Brook. And then things like, maybe one of the, one of the strategies is hours of operation, and I I don't recall reading hours of operation, but maybe it was in there. So I don't know if you want to address that, or if maybe at the next meeting you would like to address it.
I know, I think I should touch on it, just in case it kind of spurs some discussion that'll be helpful, as, you know, when we kind of end the meeting. So I guess the truck maneuverability to access the dock if it was on the other side, I'm having a hard time, you know, kind of visualizing that, so I can't say it's impossible. We will give it some consideration, but you know, the truck maneuverability would be a concern of mine, but like I said, we'll look at that. I think in my mind, the attractiveness of the facade of that end of the building where the access drive comes in, which is opposite the loading dock, and you know, is really attractive, that's going to be visible from South Maple Street, you know, from a perspective of that corner of the building. I think as you're driving down South Maple, and you can get a glance kind of at that corner of the building, up the site driveway, you know, you're going to see a very attractive building facade. If the loading dock is on that side, If the loading dock is on that side, um, that's going to be the thing that people see driving down South Maple Street and you can
And sorry to cut you off, Steve, but I, I think I understand what your point is there and, uh, and maybe, and again, maybe it's just for some thought for the next meeting, um, Earth Design may be able to, you know, a nice retaining wall right there that is, has shrubs in front of it. So that you're, you're kind of masking that, that banner truck that's, that's there might, might, uh, solve that issue and, and even further hide the, the backup alarms that might uh, be necessary for those trucks. It's just, again, just things that I think it, we should vet at least.
Understood.
Uh, Jim, getting back to the backup alarms, I believe, um, technology has changed a lot in regards to that. And, um, there are now, uh, I'm probably getting in trouble with making this. There are now swish alarms as you back up which do the same thing if I'm not mistaken.
For the most part, I, I'm not, uh, Stephen might be able to touch on this more, but I, I don't know if certain, certain trucks, I'm, I'm sure you could switch from the beep to the swish, but I don't think all trucks are going to be able to, to do that, especially not the delivery trucks like the FedEx or whatnot.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I'd hate to, uh, to talk about something that I'm not, uh, an expert on with that, but I'm happy to look into it, but I don't know if we'll be able to completely control it for those third-party trucks like Jim mentioned.
That's fine.
But hours of operation since Jim brought it up, uh, we, we talked about a lot at the first meeting and I know you guys, you know, kind of, you know, get a little bit rundown after that Red Mill project, after multiple meetings, and I get run down just as a spectator. Hours of operation are fairly standard Monday through Friday, like 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Saturday, like 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You know, and that's it. It's, you know, it's a warehouse retail, you know, in an industrial zone, but it's, it's not an industrial use that's, you know, high noise, uh, manufacturing. It's, like I said, kind of standard, standard work hours.
Jim, do we need a motion to, um, from law? Anyone else from the, uh, general public?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Bill?
Anyone else from the general public?
Not this time. Bill, can I ask one, one quick question? Steve, with regard to the, the plantings out front of the building, is, is that predominantly bushes with some trees or what?
Can you? Is, yep, it is. Oh, it's a pretty good blend. Let me just share it again quickly. So there are five, uh, five trees in a fairly short distance and if I'm not mistaken, they are, and please don't laugh if I, there's a culvis. They're called, uh, green vase, uh, there's a culvis, two and a half inch caliper, a time of planting, uh, 24 feet on center. And, uh, at ground level between the trees are, um, you know, ground cover plantings and, and perennials. And there's a little bit of a slope there, so that's, those will be planted on that slope. It's not a drastic slope. It's a three to one slope for a short distance horizontally. Uh, so I, it'll be, it'll be very attractive combined with the facade of the building.
Yeah. So, thank you for that. Again, um, to the extent that we can, so once we, once we clear this particular section of, or we, we clear the, the lot for this project, those trees were buffering the building behind it. So to the extent that we can create as much screening to, um, because it's not only this building that's being screened, it's also the larger building behind it that, um, is also being screened. So to the extent that, and I appreciate what you did so far, but to the extent that you could, make sure that that is the maximum possible amount of screening that we can do for, uh, the neighbor across the street, I think that would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely. We'll, we'll take a look and see if there's something else we can do. I think, uh, this building will do a fairly good job of screening, but I, I know that you can't replace what's there today. You know, which is kind of a mixed hardwood and, and pine kind of forested area.
Yeah, whatever you can do. I appreciate it.
Steve, um, in regards to lighting, will it be down draft?
Yeah, there's actually no pole lighting. It's, you know, it's a small lot and a building. It'll only be, uh, building-mounted lighting, which will have full cutoff shields. So yes, it will be down, uh, down lighting with the cutoffs only mounted on the building.
Anyone else in the board have any comments? Liz?
No, I have no comments.
Phil?
Nothing additional.
Dennis?
I have none.
Um, so I think our next meeting, um, will continue as forward to February 11th, Jim?
Yes, that's the board's pleasure. That's, that's available.
Is that doable, uh, Steve?
Yeah, is that your next meeting?
I believe so.
So there is an available date on the 28th. Um, right now you don't have anything on that agenda though.
And what do we have for the 11th?
Uh, right now it's, uh, JD Raymond is, is that the main one?
We, I don't mind if you can push off to the 11th, that's fine, or the 28th.
Yeah, I don't want to make you guys have a meeting if you have nothing. If you don't expect anything to come in, Jim, for the 28th, probably at this point.
No, it wouldn't be at this point yet. Nothing else would be coming in.
Be a nice night off for you guys, right?
Sevable, yes.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I think we're, we're, we're fine with that. Obviously, we're eager. Uh, I know the burden is on us to, uh, to address these comments. We're ready.
I think you've already addressed some of them, by the way, so.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
We will, uh, we will do our best and, uh, thank you for your time. We'll see you on the 11th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim, do we need a motion?
Yes, please. A motion to continue to February 11th.
Motion to continue this meeting February 11th.
So moved.
Have a second?
Take it.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Steve, thank you. Bob, thank you. The mechanic street signal bonding agreement?
Yes, so we do have a few general business items. This, uh, this agreement is more, uh, the, the, the request of the developer. Uh, the traffic signal agreement that which is in your package, uh, is something that was a condition of the, uh, original permit that you, that was issued here by the planning board. And so what, essentially what's going on to date is that, um, I, I will say the, the developer is working extremely hard to get a signal in place on mechanic street at the new intersection. Um, and, you know, it, it favors them to get that in place because, you know, the, the board was smart and, and wise enough to put a detail in place until such time the signal is in place. So they, they would much prefer to put a signal instead of paying our officers to stand there. Uh, so, um, DOT right now has come to an agreement, uh, to put a signal in place at this intersection, but not fully functioning yet. Um, and nevertheless, it's not there just yet. So, um, you know, I told them they can certainly bond it, uh, if they want to receive an occupancy permit. Uh, but, uh, you know, it either has to be bonded or it has to be up. And so, uh, since they're not quite prepared to put it up just yet, and, and the reason for that is simply getting the 100% uh, design approved by DOT, which has been dragging their feet a little bit. And then, you know, the, right now it's a little bit difficult to, uh, to procure steel, uh, in, in this country at the moment. Uh, so it's, it's taking a little bit longer, so they, they wanted to bond it. So, uh, we got the agreement. We vetted it through town council, went through a couple of different iterations, uh, town council had blessed it. Uh, and we had, uh, them sign off on it. So they just wanted, uh, to be sure that the, the planning board is, uh, amenable to this agreement and, uh, and we're looking for a vote, uh, a favorable vote, uh, that they, that you agreed to this agreement.
Any discussion?
Just one quick question for Jim. Um, does this in any way operate as a disincentive for the developer to stop pursuing with such vigor the light there?
Right. No, no, I mean, this, this essentially holds 300 grand of their money, uh, until they put the, the, the light there. And I'll tell you, I, I even had another meeting just this morning, uh, with their traffic engineer. Uh, so, uh, just to get you an update, they, they're allowing, DOT is allowing for essentially a blinking light on mechanic street and the new, the new road until it warrants full activation of a light. Uh, that was kind of the compromise by DOT, uh, because we kept poking them until they gave us something. Uh, so, but nevertheless, because it's blinking doesn't mean there's a light fully there. So a detail is going to be there until, unless, uh, the board eventually says it's not warranted. Uh, but, um, but yeah, so everything is still in place and it certainly, it, it binds them to do this light or otherwise we take the 300 grand and do it ourselves, but I don't think they're going to want to, to see that happen.
All right, so I'll move to endorse the agreement.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor endorsing the bonding agreement? For Lincoln properly, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Jim, the annual report?
Yep.
I'm going to say good night, folks. I will see you.
Good night, Frank. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank.
Appreciate all your input.
Thank you.
Very valuable.
Appreciate that comment. Thank you. Bye.
So yes, the annual report's in your, uh, package. Uh, I can pull it up on the screen if you like. Um, but, uh, this essentially, this is a reminder for anybody who hasn't seen it before, uh, the town puts out an annual report of all the different boards and committees. Uh, and so annually about this time, we, uh, we, you know, just a, a general recap of what happened over the past year. Uh, despite the pandemic, we were, you know, fairly busy still. Um, and so, you know, I can pull it up on the screen if you guys, uh, like, I know it's in your package as well.
Are you looking for, for anything from us, Jim?
Just, uh, if you're good with it, just a vote or not even a formal vote, but just, uh, I just, I want to provide this to the select board, but I just want to make sure if you have any additional comments or edits that you'd like me to incorporate.
I feel very comfortable with what I've read and seen.
Yeah, thank you for, for preparing it.
Yep, no problem.
In regards to the minutes, we all had an opportunity to review the minutes from December 11th to 17th and the 22nd.
Do you want to do them all at once?
Yes.
All right, so I'll move to accept the minutes for the dates that Bill just said.
December 10th, December 17th, and December 22nd. Just so they're in the motion specifically.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. One thing I want to notice, uh, Amy, we don't say this all the time, but, uh, thank you very much for all your important, all your hard work.
Oh, you're welcome. Love doing it.
I know you have big shoes to put in the morning, Phil. Anything else this evening?
That's it for this evening.
Dennis, thank you for attending the meeting.
I'll call him and wake him up.
Your standard closing comments. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes.